All right, it is eight. It is eight thirty. We will call the meeting Committee of the Hall together or to order. Yes, you are ready.
How's that? Everybody here okay? All right. How's that? Good? Not better? All right. All right, after that, we should be ready to go. Goodie County staff has presented to the Board a couple of different times concerning a park manager position at Public Works. And those presentations gave a lot of general information about what a park manager would do. Today, I want to focus on a very specific part of what that job would be responsible for, and that is the Richard Samuelson Pavilion. So a little history. It's overly sensitive. There we go. Billsby Park, located in Stanton Township, one mile west of Cannon Falls, off of Trunk Highway nineteen, established in nineteen seventy-seven. Size is approximately sixty acres of the main park area. It's ten acres at the upper boat landing and an additional one hundred acres that exists between these two areas, which is mostly wetland. There's a picture of the Pavilion that was taken this last fall down river from the bridge over the cannon, just below the dam. And then another picture of some more plantings. All right, recent Lake Billsby Park history. So from twenty thirteen to present day, Billsby Park has gone through a bit of an expansion. The county purchased the Gaudi property just east of the main park. Park Master Plan was created. There's a link to this if anyone is interested at any point in time. When the Park Master Plan was created, it was created in conjunction with Dakota County with a vision of creating a park that was seamless in effect. So when people came to visit either the Dakota County side or the Goodhue County side, they wouldn't necessarily know that they were in one park or the other because they both complement each other, have similar features, and lack crossover amenities. Lake Billsby Park also attained regional significance in this timeframe, which allowed Goodie County to apply for a grant based off of a project that was developed in the Park Master Plan, and that was to build the Pavilion. Goodie County has received approximately one point four million dollars from the Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails Council to build the Pavilion. Goodhue County had a grant match with a total project cost of just around two million dollars. So the grant, the grant requires certain requirements. When we applied to the GMR PTC, we applied for funds to provide for a Pavilion structure that would include modern restroom facilities, the availability of potable water and amenities that would be expected at this location by trail users and park attendees. The grant was very specific for what you applied for. So when you apply for something very specific, it comes along with requirements that you also maintain what you applied for. So in the grant requirements, it states that "The state's authority or authorized representatives shall be allowed to conduct post-completion inspections of the site to ensure that the site is being properly operated and maintained." And that's the important part here. They have shown up already. They will continue to show up. They're very consistent, and they want to ensure that the large amount of funds that were given to Goodhue County are being utilized to operate that facility into perpetuity. The grant was specific that as long as that structure remains through its serviceable life, that Goodhue County operates it. "The grantee shall keep the facility open to the general public." We do not have any reason to close this facility without being in violation of the grant. Board action that was taken, sorry.
Go ahead.
Yep. Not just the park. Yep.
All the entirety of the park is.
Yes. Board action that was taken on May twenty-first, twenty nineteen by the Board in a three-to-one vote. The resolution stated, be it further resolved, that we are fully aware of the information provided in the funding request, including any non-state match and other long-term commitments as defined in the funding request. That's referring to the commitment to keep this facility open and operating. So that's the grant and the board action. So why is this important? It's important because the Board accepted a grant that requires a certain level of service. That service requires, and this is Pavilion specific, that we ensure proper cleaning on a regular basis, that we make the needed repairs to keep the building in conformance, grounds, landscape, and maintenance surrounding this facility, and then coordination of use by public and security features. Construction of the Richard Samuelson Pavilion also requires an operating septic system, which is currently non-operational. What the county planned on doing with the septic is installing the tanks, doing a study based on usage. So there's a lot of data collection required to ultimately determine a sizing for a drain field for the septic system. So that's going to take a year's worth of data collection once we can actually operate the Pavilion completely. Reservations to this Pavilion is reservable. There's two wings to it. They can be reserved individually, or they can be reserved collectively. We are working with Dakota County. They have a reservation program and are able to allow Goodhue County the ability to not double up on the purchase of a program to do that, so it's a cost-saving maneuver, and it also keeps things consistent. They're able to assist us with that part of the process, but reservations are a little bit more in-depth. We have to work with Stanton Township on approvals for certain-sized events. We need to coordinate. We need to have the ability to coordinate with Stanton Township, and someone's going to have to be able to do that. Along with reservations also comes, it comes a lot of questions, a lot of issues, depending on people's types of events, certain things that they would like to do. As you all know, if you've ever reserved anything for a graduation or wedding event or anything like that, there's always a lot of questions, and you want a point person to talk to. Joint Powers Agreement. We are working with Dakota County on a joint powers agreement for daily cleaning of the facility and the bathrooms. And they'll come by in the morning and take care of that, put out some signage if we do have a reservation. So they are able to assist us in that. What happens in the meantime, between that morning cleaning and potentially in the afternoon, is left up to Goodhue County and staff. So if there's a problem, someone creates a mess, rearranges the picnic tables, anything that would be disturbing to a potential reservation later in the day, we're responsible for that type of stuff. They're just helping with the initial cleaning in the morning. Department of Health, we're going to have potable water. We're going to have testing in coordination with them to ensure that we're in compliance with the state. Potable water, we have to ensure that we provide reasonable accommodation for that. Restrooms, the grant was specific to modern restrooms and providing that amenity security. We're currently in the process of having fiber installed, and again, we're working with Dakota County for access to their fiber stream. Steve has been integral in helping us with some of that language, so. And John Smith has been dealing with a lot of the technical aspects of the security system, and we're very close to having a fiber connection out there. And then back to Stanton Township, there's always a lot of coordination and communication with Stanton Township. They're a big player in what we do and how we do things at the park. All right, so where do we go from here? Option one. Option one would be approved Parks and Trails Manager, Coordinator, Lead. We can look at semantics and call a position, a lot of different things. But having someone available to ensure that we're meeting the intent of the grant and operating this facility is the most important part. Under this option, our service level would be met. Option two, we could look at contracting the required work to meet this new level of service. Under this option, service level is also met. It's a lot more questions in my mind about what it would cost. It would likely be more expensive, and you'd more than likely receive fewer services as a whole. It would require staff on top of it to manage the contract to ensure conformance. Option three, we could look at creating additional hybrid positions. That service level becomes questionable. Currently, our department is not staffed with people that have a lot of or any availability to take on the type of work required to operate the Pavilion. Option four, deny the Parks and Trails position request. That service level is not met. The takeaway here is that a decision to provide the level of service needed at Billsby Park has to be made. The county has committed itself to acceptance of the grant, the implementation of the grant, the building of that Pavilion, and now we have to round that out with the operations. So while this is very specific to the Richard Samuelson Pavilion, we also know that the position is going to accomplish a heckle a lot more than just maintaining the Pavilion and the park on a daily basis. But it really is a key function of the position. I mean, for six months out of the year, we plan to have the Pavilion be reservable and operable, and we need to be, we as the county need to be reasonable in how that's managed. Current staffing, the way things are currently set up. My position, Parks and Trails is a division and a responsibility of my job. Fifty-five percent of the administrative accounting assistant includes Parks and Trails. That is difficult to manage and maintain as her position on a week-by-week basis. One week, she's working on paying bills, and the next week, she's working on paying staff. Those, a lot of days in there are completely consumed by those activities, which makes her unavailable to work on anything parks-related. So if there's an issue with the Pavilion, it's just not going to be attended to because she's not going to have that availability. So projects that need to be completed, and I kind of spoke to that earlier about the septic drain field. But as part of our work and part of what we've planned and communications that we've had with Stanton Township include park host sites and a fish cleaning station. Those are two projects that need to be designed, and then they need to be built out completely to take care of some of the issues that we know are going to be a part of what we're going to deal with at the Pavilion. And then, once the park host sites are built and able to be utilized, we need to go through a process to actually hire some park hosts, so we have some people at the park on a daily basis, making sure that things are operating how they're supposed to. So those are projects that are in the works, but currently not able to be worked on due to a lack of availability from staff to work on those, but they need to, those need to happen. Proposed structure and staffing. So currently, two of the three administrative positions in Public Works are vacant. That's the Office Manager and Accountant and the Administrative Support Specialist position. Due to the Administrative Support Specialist position being vacant, it affords Goodhue County an opportunity to offset Parks and Trails position for twenty twenty-four and allows us to evaluate, as we replace vacant positions in the department, we can evaluate how things are working to ensure that if there's a shift in a percentage of work in the administrative accountant position, so reducing that parks percentage from fifty-five percent to something substantially less, what that would do to free up enough time to offset potentially needing that Administrative Support Specialist. I'm not saying that we don't need it, but it gives us time to evaluate whether we need it. I would rather hire for need instead of hiring for want. That would, to me, that would be the most prudent and financially responsible way to approach this. So in twenty twenty-three, our Public Works organizational chart looked like what's shown on the screen. It kind of lays everything out. The proposed structure, the two sections that are in blue show the inclusion of a Parks and Trails position, and then the Administrative Support Specialist is what we would take a look at and evaluate in the department over the course of twenty twenty-four to determine need moving into the future. So there are some follow-up questions. The first one, what are the costs of the position? We've taken a look at the estimated salary at a grade one-twelve step two. DDA still needs to analyze the job description that's been written. Final touches on that have been made. Right now, this is just an estimate, but with single insurance, the salary would look like ninety-nine thousand and change. With family insurance, one thirteen and change. Some office essentials, we'd be looking at computers and a computer and other things, a desk potentially, a vehicle. Currently, we still have the director's, the former director's county vehicle. That's still available to us. It's used on a routine basis, but that could be allocated to this position. Number two, can this position be funded through a new funding source, or will levy dollars be utilized? So outside of twenty twenty-four, moving into twenty twenty-five, we do not have a defined funding source bringing in additional revenues other than what is being collected through the reservation process at the Pavilion. So revenues from the reservations will offset some of that, but levy dollars will have to cover the remaining portion of the position, unless, of course, we could find grant dollars to fund this position. I don't know of any. I haven't seen any to date. Number three, why should the Board consider this position now as opposed to waiting for the budget process? So obviously, that would be the ideal thing, but as we all know, personnel issues come up and they create unique situations, and especially with this one, we have an opportunity to look at the structure at Public Works and ensure that the positions that we have are fully needed, not just replacing them because they're vacant. We can also meet the intent of the grant by getting a Parks Manager hired or a Parks Staff Person hired as soon as possible. With the Board approving a higher service level at Billsby Park due to the construction of this Pavilion, you know, we have a dedicated staffing need to accomplish what we have obligated ourselves to. Last question, when compared to other counties, how does Goodhue County rank? I was fortunate enough to visit with the interim Park Manager at Rice County, and they had gone through, they had gone through an exercise with a consultant titled Rice County's Park System Plan, and they took a look at. They took a look at how they compared statewide to similar-sized counties, metro counties, their neighbors, and this is the net result. And there's a lot of data points in there. There's a lot of information. Some of the takeaways are the park acreages, the number of parks total, and how everything kind of shakes out. We haven't focused a lot on discussions about trail miles, but I have included that as well. Topic of, you know, how things are structured as far as number of staff varies greatly depending on where you're at. Currently, Goodie County is at point five-five percent of an FTE. You'll see Rice County is at point two. The data, you have to know a little bit more about how the data was derived and how they're looking at it. My time is not included in this percentage, and in Rice County, their Director of the Parks is not included in there as well. They're accounting for a point-two percent of a maintenance worker who picks up garbage on a daily basis from their parks. Their parks, for the most part, are completely built out. They do not include amenities that we have. Rice County does not have a Pavilion that requires a level of service that we do. You know, another portion of this is the department's structure. We've routinely discussed that in terms of parks. And several have an actual Parks Department. Some include their parks in their Public Works, and Rice County currently has their parks housed in their Facilities Department. In conversation with the Director, they said they've heard from several people, from several counties, asking why they do that, and it was something that had been done a long time ago, and they're exploring moving that out of Facilities and having it either be a standalone department or moving it to Public Works. So as you can use this information for data points, you can also see that each county is very individual in its approach to parks. There's not a lot of consistencies. There's not a lot of information that can be derived to point to any one thing and say that we need to do this because this is how everyone else is doing. Everyone's unique. Goodhue County is no different. We have very wonderful aspects to each of our three parks. And there's definitely a lot more that can be accomplished with parks. So I just want to end with reminding the Board that it is critical that we do figure out what we're, how we're going to handle the level of service that's been created through the addition of the Pavilion.
Any questions from the Board at this point? Thank you for your presentation, Jess.
So is currently Dakota County on track? They're all set up to manage this joint powers? The Pavilion's able to be rented out tomorrow?
We're not at that point.
Okay, and we're going to be at that point yet this summer?
The grand opening is currently scheduled for June eighth.
Okay, so at that point, is Dakota County, we've got it all set up with them, joint powers agreement, everything to clean it every day, take care of the restrooms every day? Reservations are able to be done and taken care of?
Yep.
Yes, so June eighth, so we got that, got a list of things that this manager would be required to do, so that part of it's done. So Public Works currently is taken care of up until that point of emptying the trash?
We work in conjunction with our own staff and our sentenced-to-serv crews.
Okay. So they're mowing, taking care of that, the same level? The Pavilions are there, somebody can use them, but they're not really able to be rented?
If they're not reserved, they're walk-up available.
Okay. Did you, when you found the job description for this particular person, I mean, you've got it graded at a one-twelve, seems rather high for this position. Did you separate it out? The accounting takes care of a majority? Or this is all completely separated out for Parks and Trails? I mean, it just, that position seems rather high of a grade.
The Park Manager?
Yes.
Well, right now, it's just an assumed level. I don't know what it's going to actually rank at. We wanted to take an approach to this that was responsible financially. Not trying to oversell anything or undersell anything. If you look at a lot of, a lot of job descriptions for a lot of different counties throughout the state that have parks positions, park managers, the, where we have assumed this ranking to be is in line with what one would expect for a Goodhue County Park Manager.
Seems like pretty good pay for what I guess is expected. I guess I would question what the job description or what direction it gets us into.
I think when you look at the numbers, Commissioner, you know, salary and benefits are included in that. A lot of times, I think when people are looking at the cost of a position, you're looking at just purely the salary. So yeah, it would appear to be, I can understand your comment.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, one question that I have. So clearly, the Pavilion needs to be running, but if the reservations are taken care of, if the grass is mowed, and if the bathrooms are cleaned every day, I understand there's other things for the parks overall, and I understand there's other needs and wants for the parks. But aren't those the three essential things for making that Pavilion functional?
This is going to be, I mean, essentially, the Pavilion is operable.
But I mean, so people could, right, but.
And the reservations, I would imagine that the majority of those are afternoons, evenings, and weekends. And we do not receive any support or have anyone assigned to handle those activities during those timeframes.
Yeah, so I'm just thinking of my experiences with Cobble Park. Okay, I don't think that the city sends people down on Sunday evenings to clean up the park. I don't think they do. I think they ask the people who rent it to put their garbage appropriately, and the city comes back the next day. So I couldn't see why we would be going out Saturday evening or Sunday evening. And maybe I'm missing something, but I don't think that's the standard, at least for Red Wing Parks.
I can't speak to how Red Wing necessarily handles their business. I know that Red Wing has thirty-two parks as a whole, and they rely heavily on volunteer staff. It's, I think, parks are managed by the Public Works Department. And through the use of volunteer support, someone's obviously coordinating that and managing that group and getting people out there to take care of things. I don't know how they do things on weekends. The fact that we are relatively removed from the location of this park, I mean, it's exceptionally difficult to be able to manage anything if we don't have somebody actively pursuing that. I, we can't necessarily claim that there's not going to be issues that need to be resolved on a Friday afternoon, evening, or anytime during a weekend. I guess if I was paying reasonable money to reserve a facility, I would have an expectation that things are in order, and if there was a problem, that I would be able to reach someone to resolve that. Beyond that, though, I mean, there's a lot of other factors to consider in having someone manage. in having someone manage this facility.
I have another question about, kind of about the financial aspect of it. That's a little bit different. But could it not be the case that you could have from now until, I don't know, budget time or the first of the year to see if you need that administrative position? And could that money from the administrative position that isn't being filled use, be used for the contract? So we would have a better idea of, one, what a contract would cost, but two, what kind of problems are being called in? And so then, then this position could be part of the budget process, but we would fill in with the contract so you could see if you need the administrative position. And so we, as a board, could compare the cost of a contract to the cost of a full-time position being added to the county.
At the time that we opened the facility at our grand opening in June, I will not be staffed in Public Works to accommodate doing the work that's necessary to keep this facility operational. We have a responsibility to manage, maintain the septic system and monitor exactly what's happening, happening with that. I will not have staff available to do that. So we will not be able to appropriately design a drain field for that in the future.
So Jess, are you saying option two, there it says service level would be met? And, and so are you telling me that that's not in fact the case? That option two, the service?
If we contract for, for the work necessary to do all this?
Yes.
Uh, no, we, we could, but I need to, I would need to start that process to determine who we would contract with and, and establish the parameters for that and determine a cost and, and, and move that forward. I will tell you that we will not get the same level of service or the amount of work out of that, out of a contract that we will out of a Parks Manager who, or a Parks Staff Person who is able to take on a lot of other responsibilities with our other parks. This is just one facet of what this position's going to look at. Yep.
Right, we are just past nine o'clock here. So any other questions? Linda, you had?
I just have one. I need to go back to the basics. It says we have three parks. What are the three parks?
So we have Lake Billsbury Park. We have the canoe and kayak launch in Cascades and the Nielsen Memorial Resort.
Okay, thank you.
Brad.
Just a comment. We had this in front of us as part of our budget process and we cut it out. We took it out.
Right.
So waiting for another budget process. Well, I understand that may appeal to some people. It doesn't to me because we need somebody taking care of that place all summer. And I understand you could contract for that work. But I just, why would we put, we got fifty-five percent of this job already covered or basically probably fifty percent of it. We're only adding fifty percent to the cost of parks. It's not like we're adding a whole nother position to parks. We'll end up with one FTE, not one-point-five-five FTEs. So I, I just, we need to take care of that facility or we're going to be reactive to what happens there instead of proactive to taking care of it. And I cannot go down the path of being reactive to see what happens before we do something. That makes no sense to me and it makes no sense to the public to be reactive. I think, I think.
If we're in violation of that grant, if the state would come back and say we don't meet the intent of what we applied for, they very easily could come back with some consequences.
I think what we've seen in Goodhue County, and I can use two examples. One, in HR, we were very understaffed and we had a hard time getting job postings out in a reasonable amount of time. We pulled the trigger and staffed HR to a position, to the point now where I don't think you'll find a Director in this county that says they can't get their job posting out timely and efficiently to get work done, to get staff hired. The second is in the Veteran Service Office, which it took like three years to get to the point where we had two people working on VSO work and one administrative assistant. And you all get the comments from the public about how much better it is to be responsive and get service. This is not any different than that. The public's going to expect a response when they call Sunday morning and they say, we just got here to the pavilion and it's a dang mess. Somebody, somebody made a mess here and we got a party in an hour or two hours. Who's going to respond? I can tell you, it's the guy sitting right there. That's where the buck's going to stop. And that's not the right pay to be doing that work. It is a Park Manager to be doing that work, not the Public Works Director. And that's what we're asking this department to do. So if no is the answer today, this board really needs to have a different solution. We have to have a solution or we're, we are going to be reactive to a problem and the public's not going to be happy about that either. That's my spiel on this. I've been supportive of this. I was supportive of it last year. I'm supportive of it now. You need to take care of the facilities you have. They're public facilities.
Any other comments? I was not supportive of this last year. In the recent months, looking at it, I, I have supported it. I'm looking at the opportunity to position those costs. I mean, hopefully that, like you say, it's the fifty-five versus the one FTE. Hopefully the, you know, it's open for six months. These, this first year and a half to two years is a lot of activity out there. After that, you know, I mean, I, we don't know what's going to happen over the staffing over the next year or two. I don't know if that can be adjusted later, if, if there's, you know, retirements or whatever. So, you know, I, I guess at this point, I would trust Jess to do his best due diligence and to, you know, I don't see any big expenses right now, but yes, we could encounter those in the future. But since we have this, we have to take care of it. So I would support the full-time.
Just one more comment. It's not like we aren't already having to be reactive because we heard at the Park Board meeting about people cleaning fish in the new pavilion because we don't have a fish cleaning station. That is part of this. We need somebody to work on getting the facilities there to meet what the public's looking for. And there's nobody that has time to work on getting a fish cleaning facility designed and built or grants written for it or any of that. And getting the park host there would be monumental in managing that park because somebody would be there all the time watching and letting us know before it's a serious problem. But we can't get to that unless you have staff time to do it and we don't have that.
So, thank you. Any other comments? We'll take a like three-minute and we'll be back here for the start of the meeting.